I remember.
I remember.
I'm just talking.
Yeah.
I was, but I was.
Yes.
That's it.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
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 Actually, just covering.
Yeah.
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 Can you not hear me?
Nope.
Hey Steve, can you hear me? Hello, we think we got you now.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
They're not making records anyway.
Lee?
And you've only got...
Keep talking for a second.
Two or three.
No.
Vendors should care and I'll find out what...
Lee, can you hear me now?
Three does.
Yes.
Have me open.
Talking.
Talking.
Hello?
Please.
Please.
Hello.
Testing one, two, three?
Yeah.
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 Right.
Testing one, two, three?
Yeah.
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 He's testing that. Can somebody...
Testing one, two, three?
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hello?
Yeah.
Who's here?
Do you know?
We're here.
We're here.
No.
Okay.
We hear him.
You go forty-five seconds.
You just need to...
You set the right setting and then adjust the volume.
Yeah.
Testing one, two, three? Okay.
You guys ready?
You're good.
You're good.
You're good.
Guys ready?
Okay.
Good afternoon. At this time, I will open the Commissioner's meeting for Monday, February 12, 2024. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of Commissioners Altman and Harabrant present at this meeting, as well as Commissioner Dillinger, who is virtual. If you would all please stand, and Connor, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the approval of the Executive Session Memorandum from today. Your approval?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dillinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Harabrant?
Aye.
You have a... Oh.
Unanimous. Okay. Next item up is the approval of the meeting minutes from January 22, 2024.
So moved.
Move approval. It's been a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Altman, a second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Dillinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Harabrant?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Motion passes. Next up is the bid opening, 2024 annual highway bids.
That's a lot of them.
Wow, that's a lot of them.
Yes. What we traditionally do is I will adjourn to the back room, and those that are interested could come with me, and we will open and read part of the bids. We'll open all the bids and we'll read part of them, and we will come back in and report back to you when we're finished.
Sounds perfect.
Okay. That sounds great.
You'll probably be done before I can.
I know. That's a big stack.
Yeah.
You're scared to...
Anyone interested that would like to follow our attorney back to open up the bids, please do so. Next up, we have the plat approval, the replat of Abraham's Blessings.
Sort them out, so...
Mr. Lucas?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We have one plat on the agenda today. It is located in Wayne Township, east of Cynthiaan Road on 191st Street. It was a three-lot subdivision that is being reduced to two lots, and we recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Dillinger, a second by Commissioner Altman. Roll call, please.
Respect, I'll just call you by your last name if that's all right?
That's fine.
Okay. Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries. Three, zero. Next up, we have highway business.
Good afternoon. Today I have no road cut permits, no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits. I do have a list dated February 12, 2024, of bonds and letters of credit for your acceptance. We recommend the board accept.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
I have no bonds or letters of credit for release, through agreements and/or supplements. I have one supplement. This is for Bridge 310 Engineering Agreement Supplement Number Three between USI Consultants and Hamilton County. This adds $20,000 to construction paid services. This is reused on an as-needed basis. This brings the due not-to-exceed amount to $813,000 and zero cents. We recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Dillinger, or Commissioner Altman, a second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Please proceed.
If you would like, I can combine the next two items into one of those.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I have the title sheet for Bridge 143 Cherry Tree Road over Vestal Ditch and a request of permission to advertise for Bridge 143 over Vestal Ditch. This would be for a bid opening on March 25, 2024. Would recommend the board sign the title sheet and approve our advertising.
Is that a state-funded or a federal?
It is a locally funded project.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
You notice that we only have the signature block portion of the big sheet?
Got it.
Paste it to the original. I have no traffic study correspondence for you today. The next item is public works quotation results. I have a list dated February 12, 2024. Attending three items. The first was for Bridge Number 143 tree clearing. We solicited eight quotes and received four. Recommending an award to Save-A-Tree in the amount of $10,690. Next is for Bridge 284 railing repair. We solicited four, got three. Recommending an award to James H. Drew in the amount of $4,500. And Bridge Number 133 railing repair. Solicited four quotes, received two. We're recommending an award to C-Tech Corporation in the amount of $5,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, it's not on your agenda, but under official actions, I do have an official action for you today.
Okay.
This is for regulatory signs. As you've seen in the past, we had to do emergency vehicle postings on two bridges that we already had. During our bridge inspections, we found another bridge that we had to do the rating on as well. This would be Bridge 184 Brook School Road over Mud Creek. This is north of 116th Street. And we are re-cutifying or rerunning this through for the other two bridges as well because they changed the wording on how the signs have to read. We have checked with the fire departments that use these bridges, and their big trucks can pass over everything but the Cumberland Road Bridge, which they never used anyway. We recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
Those are all the items that I have under my part. Now I have some of Brad's items. The first item is a request to procure a new front-end loader. Requesting perceived procurement of a John Deere front-end loader. We will be divesting of our 2014 Hyundai loader, which we will either trade in or dispose of on GOV deals. The funds have been appropriated in the 2024 budget. We recommend the board approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Dillinger, a second by Commissioner Altman. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Altman?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next item is a letter from the Board to the Indianapolis NPO memorializing the appointments that you made at your January 8 meeting for the Policy Board and Technical Board, primary and proxy. We recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
Last item is, we recently received a revised contract from NDOT regarding federal funds for the 236th Street project. There was an increase to that. Just wanted you to acknowledge this so that Brad can sign the contract with them. Acknowledged.
So acknowledged.
Yes. And that is all the Highway Department has today unless Brad comes back out.
Okay. Thank you. Court Administration, Jill? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We just have a meal expense for the Guardian at Lydham program, some training sessions, and then they have their annual meeting.
It's quite a range. What is it per person that you anticipate spending?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Shelley Haymaker. I'm not sure. Because my office doesn't spend it. Shelley is, with being the program director, is the one that does it.
It's like between $100 and $600. I know it's not much, but it seems like we ought to have per person on this request.
I could ask her and then...
Well, that's okay. I'll move to approve it.
Okay.
I think maybe we ought to talk about what a reasonable per diem is on...
Sure. I'll let her know for next year, too, as well.
Okay.
Great.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Motion, yes, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Martin's ISSD. GIS Consulting Services Scout of Work Tasks Amendment Number One.
This is just an amendment to an existing contract we have with Phil Worrell. He's helped us with the, some of the GIS task and the RFP that we did with the new product that's coming in this year. It's just an extension, to extend some of those hours for education and use of some of the LIDAR data that we'll get this year.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman?
Aye.
Dillinger?
Aye.
Harabrant?
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources, Sheena. Topic is ID Tech HR Supervisor's Workshop Proposal. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Last year was our first partnership with ID Tech in designing training for supervisors countywide. We currently have in excess of 200 supervisors in all of our facilities. And so we have not only training of current supervisors, but we're trying to address the session planning and looking at the future. And last year, we had a semester-long program in which 20 people participated and graduated. And it was very successful, but I felt like we were trying to find ways to have more specific topics that are relevant to our people that are crucial today and allowing them to do so on many different dates and times so that their schedules can be more flexible. I think we have a pretty good plan. I'm going to introduce you to Christina Collins, and she's going to give the presentation today.
Hi. Good afternoon.
So the program is HR Fundamentals for Supervisors. We're looking at running six cohorts with an open lab opportunity for individuals to stop in and ask questions. for individuals to stop in and ask questions. We'd be training 120 supervisors and the cost would be $154.67 per person.
I didn't quite understand. It's every Thursday as I read the thing. Is there a specific time or is it online, on demand?
Well, we're actually, we're kind of open. I did get a response back from Cora Adams this morning that we could use the jury assembly room, that little training room there. Since we'll have an opportunity for 20 people to participate. Basically, the teacher will be here every Thursday, all day long for the months of March and April, and she'll have three classes, the same class each day, so they could choose whenever they would like to come. And then we'll have one hour of open lab to help folks with specific problems that are relevant to those topics. And then we'll do that actually twice. We'll have the four classes each Thursday in March, and then we'll replicate that in April so that they can have more flexibility. And it's going to address the things that we feel are important today.
Great.
Great. I move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Safety Risk Management, Stephen Rushforth, two items, liability trust claims and Hamilton County Building Emergency Action Plan Template.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So today, to kick things off with the liability trust claims, I have two items. The first of which is from an incident that occurred on November 11th, 2023. It was an internal claim administered by our office where, on the date of the incident, an employee assigned to the sheriff's office struck a gear with a patrol vehicle, resulting in permanent damage. The vehicle was repaired by Miller's. The invoice was $2,839.13, and today I'm just seeking your approval to issue payment for that.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item.
The second item is an internal claims form for an incident that occurred December 6th, 2023. The short version is a vendor, by mistake, struck a loading dock while making a delivery. That has since been repaired. The invoice amount is $3,522.05. Today, I'm just seeking your approval to issue payment for that. And then I just wanted to also share, we have since collected reimbursement that is, has been provided to the auditor for, to be deposited, so this is really going to come out as a wash.
Moved to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And the third and final item that I have on today's agenda is a Hamilton County Building Emergency Action Plan Template. This template was developed to fulfill a compliance gap. CFR 191038, which is adopted by IOSIA. By reference, is the OSHA standard that outlines when a building has to have an emergency action plan and the elements that need to be addressed within it. The template that I've prepared is something that I foresee being able to utilize as we move into new facilities, as well as to address some current gaps that we have. It could be, we could partner with departments to quickly get them an emergency action plan in place. Happy to answer any questions on that, but that's what we're.
So is this something that we ought to incorporate into our COOP COG?
So the, I definitely think they should be referenced. They're, they're kind of addressing two separate things, but I, I would say that they should be nearby to a COOP plan. Specifically, this is for occupational safety and health versus continuing operations. But they, I mean, they're definitely, both would be necessary in the event of emergency.
So are we gonna exercise these?
Yeah, that, yes. And there is a section within the plan that talks about drills as well.
Okay. Because it, I mean, having it's meeting a requirement, but exercising it makes it effective.
Yes, ma'am. And that's, that's kind of, we started with the development here because now that COVID has, you know, gotten us to a point where getting people together in concentrated settings isn't as much of the focus of concern that we can start doing as annual drills.
Well, you've got someone that could help you with annual drills sitting behind you, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Stephen. Next up is Community Development Block, Grant Michelle. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have before you today the required correspondence as part of the environmental review process for the infrastructure project that Noblesville is working on completing in the southwest, southwest block, sorry about that. We have the Section 106 forms that need to go to the state historic office, as well as the letters going to each of the four interested tribes for their tribal consultation.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any other additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Hey, Michelle, can you email me the full historic information you include?
Yes.
I just out of curiosity. Thank you.
Next up is Emergency Management Agency, Shane Hooker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm asking for the board's permission for MEO authorization request in support of the fire troops meeting. We rotate that once a month, and next month is, I'm sorry, this month is ours. And that's about $15 a person, and we're asking you to be less than $300.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Shane. Thank you. Grant Administration, Todd Clevenger. Ratification of Commissioner Harebrant's signature on Hamilton County Express grant application that was needed earlier on this last week that I needed to sign it so that we could get it submitted.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any other additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. You said a lot there, Todd.
You did a good job, Todd.
Sold it.
Yeah. Commissioner Committee reports. Steve, do you have anything?
No, the only thing that I have is Sheena will be bringing up under Lee about the change in recommendation for pre-65 retirees.
Okay. Commissioner Altman.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to tour the East Bank project. I don't know if you have or not. The one in the old parking area, and Lee went with me. It's big, but it is well laid out. It has some units with exceptional views. And it really is, I think, positioned toward the river very nicely.
Great.
And the others that we walked, the property we've been looking to acquire in, in the east or western part of the county. And it's very interesting. It was very muddy, but we survived.
Great. I have nothing else to report at this time. Mr. Attorney.
Yes, I have one item. The design team for the Hamilton County Regional Utility District Project, Western Engineering, is making a request that part of the water and sewer infrastructure be placed within Dunbar. This is one of three options. The other two options would likely result in either a condemnation action or negative, or negative adverse impact to one of the property owners. And so the request today is that the commissioners approve the design to permit the infrastructure be placed within Dunbar Road, with the understanding that the county recently applied for federal funding from 226 to 236. And that road will likely be, need to be reconstructed in the future. And so this is a temporary solution that is accommodating the adjacent landowners, which is, again, it's not normal, but again, it is extenuating circumstances. And we're trying to work to work with the landowner, not to inconvenience them any more than we already have.
I think we also need to request the, the utility designers to work with highway.
Yes.
Because this is out of the ordinary.
Yes.
To try to position the infrastructure in the best, best place possible, being in the roadway.
Yes.
To avoid additional movement with our highway work. And based on that, I'd move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any additional discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Anything else? Mr. Attorney.
No, no, that is all that we have. Thank you.
Okay. Director of Administration, Lee.
Yes, thank you. Commissioners, I have four items for you today. First one, presenting for your review approval and the signature of Commissioner Harebrant. I have a drinking water and wastewater infrastructure dispersment forms that are related to the January 29th, 2024 invoice, that being invoice number 12217-011 from Reynolds Construction in the total amount of $3,156,080.91 for materials and construction services related to Phase 1 of the US 31 Bakers Corner Hamilton County Regional Utility District Project. Need the signature of Commissioner Harebrant, who is the authorized signator with respect to these documents on two forms, both the wastewater and the drinking water dispersment form. They're available for you.
Move to approve the claim.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Any discussion?
On these, have you signed them already, or this is for original signature?
For his original. He has not signed them.
Okay, because it seems like we are out of whack on these claims somewhat, that they're requiring signatures before our meetings and stuff. I just don't understand why we can't get and sing for this more often.
I always like Steve Wood to review everything.
No, and I.
Before anything ever comes to me, I want him to review everything.
So he's, he's reviewing them, and then they're sent.
Set of eyes on.
They're then sent to me, and so I'm not aware of, I don't recall a time when we've had Commissioner Harebrant sign these forms prior to a meeting.
Well, we've had several where we've had to wrap our signatures on this project.
I don't know. I mean, a lot of them have been grants. They've been tied to grants, and we've had a deadline to get them in in between meetings. It's typically, and Connor can attest to this because a lot of times I'm getting emailed, you know, electronic grants to be, and not to sign to be able to get done, and they, and all of a sudden, it's, it's an emergency that I have to get them done. And so I immediately send them to Connor for review. Then Connor gets them back to me so that I can sign them if there is a deadline. Then bring them to the commissioners for ratification.
Right. On the grants, I understand. It seems like we've had this before on claims, but that didn't make sense.
There's been a couple on, on grants that I've, that I've.
Okay, I just, I mean, when we get them, we need to flip them, and the contractor needs to know what our schedule is. That's all I ask.
Commissioner Altman, to that point, I, I just saw Steve coming here, too. If there is a delay on them, it's because we sent something back to them that it wasn't sufficient.
Yeah, yeah.
So that is, that is something that, part of, when, when Dan Stevens was Director of Administration, we set up a process that how the claims will be handled. And so if something doesn't meet our standard, it is sent back to them, so that's why there could be some overlap. But if that's the case, I think it's because the process is working.
No, that's good. I'm glad it's being triple reviewed, because this is big dollars, but.
It is, and that's why, on a lot of this, I want a third set of eyes looking at it as well before it ever comes to us.
Next item, presenting for.
We need a vote.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Item number two, presenting for your review approval and a formal appointment. As you're aware, the six counties, Hamilton, Hendricks, Johnson, Shelby, Boone, and Hancock collectively have the appointment to the Marion County Capital Improvement Board. Due to the collection and remittance of countywide food and beverage stadium tax, each county choose to enact under Indiana Code 361094. Hamilton County is the largest of those counties, and therefore you're designated as the one who makes the formal appointment. I believe you'll recall that our last meeting, you indicated that Jamie Bowler-Smith, who had completed her first term, you supported her second term or reappointment. I've contacted or sent an email to the commissioners from each of the other counties. And although I did not get back a response from everybody, all the responses that I did get back were in favor of reappointment of Jamie Bowler-Smith. Based on that, I would ask for a vote on the formal reappointment of Jamie Bowler-Smith at this time as the representative for those six counties to the Capital Improvement Board of Managers of Marion County.
Does notice, does notice count, or do we need to get their signatures? I mean, it's statutory. I don't know if you pulled the statute, but it needs to be pulled, so I'd move to table until I have that answer.
I'll figure that out before our next meeting, which is in about 10 days.
Yeah.
Okay. There's been a motion to table by Commissioner Altman. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Yeah, the only one that was clear was the Johnson County response that we had with jury.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Next item, presenting for your review, discussion, and approval. We received a request from Brittany Weinbar, the Director of Advancement at Prevail, seeking permission to display the Prevail Clothesline Project in the main entry hall of the Government Judicial Center. As you're probably aware, this has been done for a number of years at this point in time. They're asking for permission to conduct this annual event again this year. They've, I've coordinated with Jill Ackland, Court Administrator, on the display, and it would go up on or about March 28th and then be removed on May 1st. There's also a possibility that it could temporarily be taken down at some point if there's a particularly sensitive jury trial, if one of the judges requests it.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Fourth item and last is I'm presenting for your review, discussion, and approval. Request from Sheena Randall, Director of Human Resources, seeking approval to adjust the pre-65 retiree insurance rates for 2024. And Sheena is here to provide specifics and to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lee. So in January of this year, we made a decision to move our post-retirees to an Anthem Group Medicare Advantage Plan. And we were running the calculations for employee costs, the folks that are post-65. And then we had provided direction to NFP to go and run the calculations for pre-65 retirees, and they just delivered that back to me. And so I sent that out to you. We're hoping that you could, we could adopt those rates, and that would be effective March 1st. And it would be a 74.5255 split, as we have with our other plans.
So do they qualify for the Anthem plan?
Pardon?
I'm confused. Pre-65, the reason we had the advantage was it'd be Medicare plus the Advantage coverage over and above, correct?
So the, the pre-65 are the people that are eligible because they've been here for more than 20 years, 55 years old. And they would stay on our plan. And this is the cost that they would pay each month for the medical.
Okay, but we don't have any corresponding reduction in cost because of Anthem, the Anthem coverage that we got with our other. That's where I'm a bit confused.
Yeah, they're completely separate.
I know they're separate, but the reason we were able to drop rates substantially because of the Anthem coverage going with them instead of carrying it on our plan. This is just a pure rate reduction for pre-65 retirees?
It's a rate reduction to hear what the other percentages are with the other plans, so that it's all on the same level.
Okay.
Commissioner Dillinger's made a motion to approve.
He did? Okay. Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Dillinger, second by Commissioner Altman. Roll call, please.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Altman.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Next up is sheriffs. We've got two items. If you could do those both together for the grant?
Yeah, these are both the State Criminal Alien Assistant Program grant for the years 2022 and 2023. The years are to reimburse us for holding criminal aliens in our jail. Recommend approval and for Mark, you to be able to sign those for us.
Okay.
So that's, that's why it goes back to 2020 and 2021?
At some point during 2020, there was a delay in all of these getting approved. And so there was a backlog, and it looks like they're just now getting caught up to those. But there was significant delays during that period of time.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, Madam Auditor.
Just a few things. First, I do want to thank you for the insurance pre-65. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. Steve, thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
First, I have the liability trust account transfer authorization, if you haven't yet. We've hired Kim's replacement, Jenny Rusia.
Welcome, Karen.
For years, I called her Rosa, and she just told me, she says, that's not my name. It's like, okay. So I want to welcome her, and so this allows to put her on the, on the account.
Sounds good.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, I have a contract for the machine service agreement for our check sealer for Hyrum Hash and Sons for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger. Steve.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have a notification of release on a capital asset for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have liability trust monthly expenditure report for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a quick, is this the banking statement summary that shows we're slightly in the, is that just a, a timing issue? That was a transfer.
Yeah, Kim, do you know, or is that one the one that you?
No, that's the one I do. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the question is.
Is liability trust, it shows a transfer coming over $46,000, and our expenditures were higher. It shows a negative, which generally, I don't know if it's just timing on this thing or.
It's timing.
Okay, so we'll catch it up next month? Okay, that's fine.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have acceptance of letters of credit and bonds for drainage boards.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, I have payroll claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries.
And lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. A motion by Commissioner Altman, second by Commissioner Dillinger. Roll call, please.
Altman.
Aye.
Dillinger.
Aye.
Harebrant.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? Seeing none, our next meeting will be Friday, February the 23rd. Yep, I said Friday. Because that's not typical when we do it, but we did have a conflict because another engagement that we have to be at. So that will be Friday, February the 23rd, 2024, at 12:15 PM. At this time, we will recess and go into work session in Conference Room 1A. If anyone would like to join, to join.